Okay.
Welcome. This is the October eleventh. Um, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. It is by Zoom webinar. Uh, attendees are advised that their image, voice, or phone number may be recorded for the record. I'll introduce the members of the panel. We have Jim Roya.
Here.
We have Virginia Zakatinsky.
Here.
We have Susanna.
Roberts. It's not on there.
Yeah, Susanna, are you still Roberts?
Of course.
Okay. And I'm Lynn Ryan. Right here. Okay. Um, it is now. Uh, what, seven twenty or what time is it here?
Seven thirteen.
Oh, seven thirteen. We're not too bad. Um, I'll open the hearing request of an appeal. I mean, um.
Okay.
Determination of a determination by the building inspector. Um. For three thirty-nine Old Central Street. Is the petitioner on?
He is. If you give me just a second, Denny Bartlett is just joining. Um, the petitioner is here. If you'd like me to promote him and I wanted to inform the board that that the um, hearing was not publicized in newspaper and it did not, the notice did not go out to a butters.
Excuse me?
The hearing was not posted in the newspaper.
I, I, I heard what you said. Um, perhaps we shouldn't have opened the hearing.
Um, well, technically, I don't think you did.
I'll introduce.
Mr. Venacasa is an attendance. I believe he intends to ask for a continuance. Do you wish me to promote him?
Would you please? And Danny, would you just raise your hand? Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Board. James Venacasa. Um, SJV Investments. I did, uh, we did get the email for, to send out all of the notifications and it was just a miscommunication on our end. Um, we, uh, I apologize and we would just like to ask for a continuance.
Okay, um. You have the posting notice, right?
We do. So they, she sent us the posting notice and I just wanted to make sure that it would be the same posting notice that we're going to be sending out to get on the next agenda. Again, I apologize. I, well, totally mistake on our end.
Okay. Our next meeting would be November fifteenth.
Okay. Would I be using the same, do you want me to use the same mailer?
I, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, you know, how they feel about it. I mean, uh, what is your relationship? You're an engineer, right? Do you do much of this?
No, so I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm the developer. Um, my engineer didn't come on tonight because I told him that we were just gonna be, um, asking, I was just gonna be asking for a continuance. I didn't want to pay him for show up if I was just asking for a continuance.
I would entertain a motion on the pad of my colleagues if they choose to do so to continue the hearing until.
It's actually November eighth, Lynn.
It's November eighth?
November eighth.
Until November eighth at seven PM. Uh, provided that the petitioner comes in and signs an extension. Mr. Venacasa?
Yes.
Um. We have a certain amount of time in order to act on your petition. And the clock starts when you file with the town clerk. So if you want us to extend the opening of this hearing until next month, uh, the owner of the property or the petitioner is gonna need to come down and sign, uh, the paperwork.
Okay.
Do you have any problem with that?
I have no problem with that. I think you're being fair and thank you very much for.
Would someone care to make that motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim, I made the motion and Danny seconded it, that provided that the paperwork is signed. Um, Leanne, are you comfortable with just changing the date and time on that, um, notice?
Correct. So, yes, I can do that and send it out tomorrow. Uh, but just to clarify, it would be that public hearing notice with the date changed and not a continuation notice?
Right.
Because usually when we continue a hearing, we, there's a continuation notice and it's worded a little bit differently. It shows the, uh, the motion and the vote.
You, you said to me, we didn't open the hearing, right?
No, you didn't officially open it, but if your board's gonna be voting to continue them.
Okay, well, let's officially vote to open it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, if I may, I, I don't think you want to do that, actually. I think you just wanna vote to postpone it without opening the hearing.
Okay, that's my feeling too. All right, that's what, that's what we're gonna do. We didn't open the hearing. We're just going to, and, and maybe the wording should be, allow the petitioner to change the date of the uh, hearing to, uh, November eighth at seven PM because the petitioner failed to, um, notify a butters and post in the newspaper. Um, is there enough time for him to do that?
Yes, because the deadline, um, is tonight, so I'll get that right out tomorrow morning. I'll change the dates on the, the public hearing notice and send it to Mr. Venacasa tomorrow morning.
Okay. You do know you're under a time crunch, correct?
I do.
And you understand that the first notice has to go in the newspaper a minimum of two weeks prior uh, to the hearing? And that both, um, it has to be in a publication of circulation locally. The two that are most used other was to telegram and the Clinton item. Both require a three-day lead time.
Okay, okay.
So just, I caution you, you're gonna have to put it in right away or you won't meet the deadline. And if you don't get it in, in time, uh, within two weeks or um, prior to the meeting, we won't be able to hold the hearing in November.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Are we straight on what the, uh, motion is? And the motion maker and the motion carrier don't have any problem with any minor changes we made? And that would be Jim and Danny. Are you okay with it?
Yeah, we're just, we're basically just changing the name from continuance to, to postpone it.
Right. And it also should say at the request of the petitioner.
Yeah.
And that it was due to a lack of notification in the newspaper and the butters. Okay. Um, we have a motion in a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye, sorry, I was muted.
Ginny?
Aye.
Okay, you have your postponement. Please try to see that, um, the notifications are made in a timely fashion.
Yes, thank you, Board.
And, and you do know you have to get them back to Leanne the Monday before the Wednesday we meet?
Okay, yes. Is there, did you, now, am I, do you want me to come in and sign? Am I signing something as well at the town hall for, was it a time?
Yeah.
Actually, I can send that out by email. I'll send everything out to you tomorrow.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. And I can sign it and send it back to you.
What a good kid you are, Leanne, because you're not even working tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
I, I am. I just work from home.
I know, but you're not legitimately working.
I'm always working.
I know.
Leanne was great to deal with. She was very, a lot of help. She was very responsive and everything. She was very, very good.
We like her too.
Yeah. I don't blame you.
All right, see you next month.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, our next hearing is for one oh seven Coben Road.
Right, but it's only seven twenty-two, so we have eight minutes to wait.
Okay, how about two and minutes if no one objects? Does someone?
The minute, we're from September thirteenth.
Would someone care to make a motion to accept the minutes for September thirteenth as presented?
Still moved.
Okay, that's, um, Susanna, is there a second, please?
Second.
Jim is a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Ginny?
I, I was not there.
All right, if you want to abstain, that's fine.
I'll abstain.
Susanna?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Okay, you have four positive votes, so we're all set. Um, what else is on the agenda? Do we have any communication?
Uh, Ginny, Ginny's, um, term is up the end of November. So we need to discuss, you need to discuss or ask Ginny if she's gonna re-up.
Are you with us, Ginny?
Oh, of course.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion, uh, to endorse the renewal for five years of Ginny Zakatinsky to the zoning board of appeals. And will we refer that to the selectman who'll make the appointment?
Still moved.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Uh, and Susanna seconded it. Uh, okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Danny?
Yes.
Susanna?
Aye.
Um, Jim?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Do you want to abstain, Ginny?
Okay.
I mean, you can vote for yourself. That would be funny. Okay, will you send notification to the, because they do that in November. I don't know what meeting they'll be doing it, but.
Okay.
Okay, what else do we have?
Pat, um, you asked me to look into conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Ginny and Keith are both overdue. Um. And Sue, Sue just updated hers. Pat's not due till February, Jim not till March, Denny not till April, Lynn, you're not till June. But Ginny, Ginny and Keith both need to do.
Okay.
I do have the website and I will get to it ASAP.
Thank you.
Okay. Just remember to, um, send me a copy of your certificate as well as the town clerk, please.
Okay.
And you'll communicate that to Keith, will you please?
Yeah, I already have. We've been in communication.
Okay. Do we have anything else other than the next hearing on the docket?
The only thing I, I received or heard today was someone came in from Whitney Estates um, with an issue regarding trash pickup there. And, and I'm not, I'm unclear because this woman was unclear. They want to come before the board to change, she thinks, the comprehensive permit because she said it says in the comprehensive permit that the town is supposed to provide the trash pickup. I have not found the comprehensive permit, so I couldn't verify that. Um, the building commissioner seems to think that that's written in the homeowners, the condo association document, in which case the, the board has no authority to, to change that. So it's a little bit of confusion as to whether it's in the comprehensive permit or if it's in the condo association documents.
Okay, could I trouble you if we don't have a copy of the Whitney Estates, um, comprehensive permit to ask the person questioning? Um, have we seen her before?
No.
Okay. Um, to go to the town clerk?
Okay.
And get a copy of, you know, um, anything that has to do with the trash removal? I mean, I don't think she needs to go and have to run off the whole comprehensive permit. But unless, and I don't know that we can make a modification in the comprehensive permit. We would have to check into that. I tend to think there's probably nothing in the comprehensive permit about trash removal. But.
Right, and it seems odd that the board would put that in there when the town has never done trash pickup.
Right. Right. So.
All right.
I, I think I'd put the onus on the person who wants to be a petitioner and just tell her to check the town clerk for, for the, um, Whitney Estates. You might be helpful to her if you look on that little, um, index that we have and see when it's approved. And what the town clerk.
If I had something on the office computer, um, but the comprehensive permit was not done on, um, the office computer. So I did not have.
That was probably done by Amy, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay, what time is it?
Seven twenty-nine, one more minute.
Okay.
I did find a file cabinet.
Oh, you did, Danny? Oh, great. Where did you find it?
There's one downstairs in the vaults. And it's antique, back, beginning of the ZBA almost.
And is it locked?
No. But the, the vault is locked. I don't believe there's a key to, to the filing cabinet.
Okay, well, we need to get into the filing cabinet, right?
The filing cabinet you can get into.
Oh, okay. So, um, what do you think we should do? Should we take everything out of the filing cabinet? Should we have someone move the filing cabinet upstairs into the room across from where, uh, we usually meet in person?
Where, where it is is perfectly safe. I, uh, I don't know what you'd want out of that filing cabinet.
Well, depending upon how far it goes back.
Okay.
I, when Ginny is doing her thing, looking for, um, filing permits and stuff, maybe not right now. But do you have any sense for what the dates are?
No. I, I, Doom, Paul, and took me down and we finally found one after going through all the files and she had to go back to work.
Okay, so is there one drawer or is it like a four drawer or?
It's a four drawer.
And is it ZBA or is it town clerk? Do you know?
ZBA.
Okay. I think we need to discuss getting ahold of that somehow. Um, either bringing it upstairs or at least investigating what the timeframe is so that Ginny could use it in her work, building the flanks on that, um, spreadsheet. So the one thing I would ask you if you could do, Danny, is get a sense of the timeframe on that file. See if it goes from whatever year to whatever year or what the most current year in there is.
All right.
If you could do that, that would be great.
I think the town clerk might have a key to that, to the vault. We go down there and go through, see what it says.
Thank you, Danny. I know that's a pain in the neck, but, um, they, they are the records that we need, you know? Okay, I take it it's seven thirty already?
Seven thirty-two.
Okay, who is, is Mr. Curtis here?
Yes, would you like me to promote them?
If you would, please. Do we have paperwork from them as far as the butters in the newspaper?
Yes, I can verify that they did publish in the newspaper by the dates requested and also a butter notification by the date required.
Okay. Then I'll declare the hearing for one oh seven Coben Road open. This is a request. And I think there is some confusion as to whether this is a, um, renewal or if it is new. So I'll put it in the hands of Mr. Curtis. You can make your presentation to the board.
Good evening. Um, we are actually, uh, looking to renew. Um, we've been in front of the board a few years ago. Uh, it's been quite a few years. Um, and I don't, we don't know if it actually quite got filed right. Uh, we don't know exactly what happened. Um, but we were just looking to, to renew what we've.
What do you mean, you, what do you mean you didn't, you don't know if it got filed right?
Um, as far as, um, as, yeah, it, it, just as far as the business permit itself.
Have you had an opportunity to read section five forty, five forty-one of the Berlin Bylaw?
I have not.
Okay. I'll just read you one thing. You, you realize your permit was for five years, correct?
Well, well, we did, but we, we thought the town was gonna contact us um, before the renewal date. But I, that's, that's where there was confusion, whether that actually got filed or not. We just, we just don't know.
The permit was granted in two thousand eleven. Okay. I find it difficult that it hadn't come to your attention until now that five years had passed.
I just, it, yeah.
Okay, well, let me just read you one section of five-body home-based contracting business. Duration of special permit. Unless an earlier expiration date is specified by the zoning board of appeals in a special permit, all special permits issued under this bylaw shall expire automatically upon the expiration of five years from the date of issuance. Prior to expiration, the applicant may apply for renewal of the special permit for another five-year period. Set application to comply with all the provisions of section three forty of the bylaw. This section is underlined in the bylaw. If this applicant fails, uh, or files a complete um, application for renewal of the special permit prior to its expiration, the special permit shall be extended up to the time of the zoning board of appeals uh, files its decision on the renewal application with the town. Upon expiration of the special permit, which has not been renewed, the applicant shall disassemble and remove any materials or equipment related to the home-based contracting business in its entirety within thirty days of the expiration of the special permit. The letter that you gave us from the building inspector says that you need a special permit. So I just wanted you to be aware of what the bylaw says. And I don't know that we can hold you, um, as he is considering it a renewal. Um, I will say that included in your original permit was a variance. But the variance was contingent, and this was for the size of one vehicle. But the variance was contingent, uh, upon having a special permit. So if, I know you've been asked to provide, um, a site plan. Have you had an opportunity to do so?
Uh, yes, I believe everything was submitted.
I did not receive a site plan.
Well, I see a, a plot of seven, one oh seven Coben Road that's part of the application. But I don't see anything indicated on it such as buildings, butters. It's like a locust map. Could you take a look at the permit you submitted and tell me what you see on the site plan?
Oh, I, I don't have. Yeah, that was, that was the, the full packet.
Well, I have a, I have a couple of other questions for you, sir.
Sure.
How, how many folks live at that residence? Adults?
Uh, two.
Okay. Um, what is the size of your lot in square feet?
Uh, square feet, it's three point zero, I think, three, little over three acres. Oh, I, yeah, I don't know what the square footage actually is.
Okay, so, uh, we'll have to check with the assessors, but, uh, three acres puts you in, there are different categories that are listed in this. I suggest you go out to townofberlin.com forward slash Z dash, uh, zoning dash board dash appeals. And on there, you'll find all the rules for, um, special permits. You'll also find a list of the bylaws. Uh, a copy of the bylaws. And I think you should read five forty and five forty-one. Okay. How many commercial vehicles do you have?
Two.
Okay, your original permit only gave you one.
Uh, that was to keep them inside if I was not taken.
Okay. I went by the property the other day and I counted eight cars in the yard.
Okay.
How many employees do you have?
Uh, one, two, three.
I believe your permit that you were, uh, granted last time um, was for yourself alone. What are the weight, the two commercials?
Excuse me, what was that? Hello?
On your, on your original special permit, I believe you said you were single. You would, you were just doing work on your own.
Yeah, it's, it's a family, a family business.
Well, I think they authorized you as an employee. Um, the commercial vehicles, could you tell me the weight of each? Um, the commercial vehicles, could you tell me the weight of each?
Um, it's a, yeah, one's a ten wheeler and that is uh that's gonna be forty, well, actually, uh the gross vehicle weight on that's gonna be sixty two thousand.
And the other?
The other is a um, a Chevy fifty five hundred. Um, and that is rated for, I believe, thirty thousand pounds.
And do you have any trailers?
Uh, yes.
Okay, how many trailers do you have?
Uh, two.
Okay, and um do you store any equipment on the property?
Uh, yes, a backhoe.
Do you store any other materials that you are used, consumed, rented uh from your property?
Uh, porta potties.
One? How many porta potties, one?
Uh, no, uh, well, at right here currently there are I believe fifteen, I believe. I'd have to, I'd have to count to be exact.
And is that, do you lease these porta potties or do you use them in your business or what?
Yes, yeah, yep.
Well, yes to both?
Yeah, we leave, we, yes, we rent, we rent them out. Yeah, that they're probably, we we got one at the school, we got for the, for the town of Berlin.
Wow, that's great. But where are they stored?
Uh, primarily on my lot in Westboro.
Do you ever store them at your house?
I do.
And do you screen them from your neighbors?
Yes, nobody can see them.
Okay, and is that because of where they're, they are or because of natural screening of trees or something?
No, just natural screening, I I try to, I, yeah, I I I don't like fences, I I, cuz it's not Berlin. I tried to, I, we tried to keep everything um looking now. When you drive by, you can't tell that there's a business run out of here. Um, we we keep it looking like Berlin.
Well, quite honestly, Mister Curtis, I would tend to differ with you when I drove by.
And when was that?
Um, I believe it was last Friday.
Okay. Is it what this, just because of the cars? I mean, I I'm, but.
Well, I, I.
I've had in-laws staying with me for the past couple of weeks and.
There were eight vehicles in the yard.
Okay, those are cars, that's really, I mean, it's, it's not, not business related. Like I say, I I got my daughter that lives here, she's got her car. Yeah, I mean, me myself, I I own four cars. Uh, my brother himself, he moved, um, he moved to Columbia. And he, and and he's got his vehicle here. Um, and it's, and everything is registered and insured. Um, I'm just trying to help my brother out with some of his stuff because he moved. So, yeah, there, it it's, yeah, but that's, that's not my business, so.
Okay, so you just have, well, you said you have three employees, who are the three employees, sir?
Um, that would be uh Justin Calderwood.
I don't know who Justin Calderwood is.
Okay.
Is that a relation or?
Uh, no, no, he's just an employee.
And who are the other employees?
David.
David?
Schwimmer.
And is that a relation?
No, just an employee.
And who's the third employee?
That would be my daughter, which she lives here.
Okay. Um, I think I'll open it up to the rest of the group. But I might suggest to you, you might request um at least an extension in order to provide us with a site plan. We need to know, you're not allowed any outside storage of materials. Machinery and materials used in the conduct, this is from the by law, in the conduct of the business if stored outside shall be completely screened from public view. Such screening shall at a minimum comply with the standards for screening of parking and loading areas in section five thirty two and shall ensure that there is no outward evidence that the premises are being utilized for any purpose other than residential.
Okay.
Well, where do you usually uh park that backhoe? Because I saw the backhoe when I went by.
Well, that was probably the one that my brother has, the one that I have, you definitely did not see cuz that's out back, I'm actually uh in the process of leveling off my backyard. So everything is actually out in the back.
And does your brother work for you? I, is this the one in Columbia?
Yeah, he moved to Columbia. He, no, he does not work for me, he's in Columbia.
So this is his backhoe?
Yes.
And.
Just that's personal.
You're storing it on your property? Well, it it lends itself to not make the the um residents look like just a residence, Mister Curtis.
Okay.
Okay, folks, um, does anyone else have anything?
Well, one of the things I'm questioning is uh by the town by law, you're only permitted one registered vehicle that less than twenty six thousand pounds gross vehicle weight and one trailer rated for less than twelve thousand pound gross vehicle weight. And you said you've got two vehicles that both exceed that weight and then you've got two trailers. I don't know what the weight on those is, but.
Yeah, because they're the same, I mean, it's the same thing that I had with our last meeting, uh which was um, which was, I I'm assuming two thousand and eleven. And nothing has changed um since then, so I mean, I I, yeah, I don't know exactly how, what was said, but like I say, I've I've never um, I've never done anything different in the past. Um, I I just, I I don't know how, like, like I say, I don't know how it was like set up or anything like that cuz I've always had, like I said, the same truck. Um, so something had to have been said at the, at the, at the last meeting. Um, uh, a- about that.
Anything else, Jim?
That's the the main item that I see that's sticking out right now, o- other than not having a site.
Anything else from any of the other folks?
Could we just verify that this is a renewal and not a new application? Because I was reading through some of the letters from the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, that this would need to be a new application because it has been expired.
And we did look at the um initial permit that was granted. So if the building inspector said this is new, then this is new, okay? Um, it also had a variance attached to it. Okay, that allowed one truck to be overweight. The problem with that is the variance was linked to the permit, so when the permit expired, so did the variance. Um, I think Mister Curtis, that my suggestion would be that if you're gonna have this overweight equipment, you need to apply accordingly. Um, and um if you're gonna have multiple trailers, I think you need to review sections five forty and five forty one and see where you stand. Um, right now, I I would be inclined to say you need to file for a variance and for a site plan approval. How do my colleagues feel?
I I think this should be treated as a new application. So, yeah, so, yes, that which, that would require a new variance and a new site plan.
I would agree with that.
Jim, you have any thoughts?
Um, yeah, I guess that makes sense.
Jenny?
Yes, same, it's been a long period of time since the original permit was granted.
Okay, what I'm gonna suggest to you, Mister Curtis, is that you ask the board to vote to continue the hearing subject to you filing extension papers. And that before next month, when we will put you on the agenda, that you file for a variance and you file for um site plan.
Okay.
So wherever you're gonna store um any materials that you use in your business, um you have to show what screening you have, you have to show who the abutters are. You have to show all the equipment that you're gonna be bringing in there. And I do think, you know, it's a, I'm only one person, I'm not speaking for the board. But if you've got a backhoe sitting in your front yard, um even though it doesn't belong to you, it it's still um construction equipment. So is it your desire that we do that, that we um continue the special permit hearing until next month at seven thirty? And in, and in the meantime, you will file for a variance and file a site plan?
Yes.
Now you're under a time crunch here.
Lynn?
Yes.
If I can interrupt, we do have um someone in attendance um asking to speak, I think it's in a butter.
Okay, uh would you promote the abutter, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mark Lashaness, I live at ninety nine Coburn Road. I also own ninety five Coburn Road, I have a statement for the board.
Thank you, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for for your time and listening to me. Um, I've lived on my property for twenty four years, I think February it'll be twenty five. I attended the original meeting back in two thousand and eleven when the expired permit was issued. At that time, the property owner had two trucks on the property, a pump truck and a pickup truck. There was also a vehicle driven by the owner's wife. It was a quiet business, small operation, the trucks left in the morning, would return in the evening. It remained that way until recently. Over the years, on numerous occasions, the property owner expressed to me to come to him if there were issues and let him resolve it and not go to the town. I'm coming to regret that and engaging in this approach. There really was never a need as they maintain the basic volume and traffic in and out of the property that I've described above. That was until the arrival of chemical toilets on the property approximately a year and a half ago. They sat in front of the property all winter long, and in the spring, I visited with the property owner and his wife. I spoke with both of them in the front parking area and expressed my concern and asked that the toilets be removed. At that time, I was told two things, that the toilets were not the property owner's, they were the daughter's and her boyfriend's, and that they were setting up a business for them to run and that they would remove them from the property. They suggested that they were looking for storage location in Westboro. The chemical toilets never left the property. What the property owner did do was cut an access road around the front of the house, up around the house, down into the back and put all the toilets out back. At that time, it became apparent what was occurring, I sent a letter to the Berlin Board Selectmen anonymously. I expressed my concern about the property being turned into an industrial site, no action was taken. At that time, it could have at least been determined that the permit had expired. I sent this anonymously as I was concerned about the repercussions of making a complaint, I'm still concerned about that now. The chemical toilet business of the daughter and her boyfriend has completely changed the dynamics and the activities on the property. The truck traffic in and out of the property has significantly increased. On any given day of the week, there are half a dozen vehicles on the property, I'm glad that you took a ride by. This, there are all sorts of supportive maintenance vehicles now in and out of the property. Maintenance trucks, small pump trucks, pickup trucks, flatbed trailers, towing chemical toilets in and out of the property, returning from leasing agreements. During the later fall and winter months now, I have headlights sweeping my yard and into my kitchen as a result of the the access road that was cut into the front of the house. There's machineries of all sorts running any time of the day. There are commercial vehicles and other items being power washed, there are backup signals going off, there's heavy equipment coming in, running in and out of the property. There are air horns blown, air brakes upon arrival and departure, there are trucks idling for extended periods of time. And now we have the order of the toilets as they are used and returned to the property and stored there. I'm guessing there are at least twenty five to thirty of them in and out of the property. As I prepared the statement at five P M in the evening on Tuesday, October third, there's been a significant uptick in activity on the property. I'm estimating there has been at least a hundred yards of material, if not more, being trucked into the property and heavy equipment moving it around. We listened to heavy equipment all week last week until dark some evenings. The property is being turned into an industrial site, and this is completely unacceptable in a residential area. There was not what was originally approved for the activity on this property. The expansion of this business on the property is outside of the scope of the original permit, this is a new permit, the permit has lapsed. As a property owner, I have the right to use and enjoy my property. I should be able to garden, work in my yard, mow my lawn, have guests and dinner on my back deck and not be subject to the noise and odor that's emanating from the property. I should be able to sit in my office with the windows open and work without the constant noise emanating from the property of machines, tools, traffics, truck and equipment. I don't think anyone would think it was unreasonable to have concerns. Simply said, based on what I've described to you, would you live next to the situation? Would you like that? Would you be in a rush to buy a home next to it? I object to any new permit being issued. I'm asking the Z B A and the town to protect me and my property and others that may not be using their voice because they're concerned about repercussions to speak up. These are our homes. We intend to retire here. The activities we are exposed to should not be permitted in a residential neighborhood. The entire industrial components should be removed and moved to a non-residential site and the office should use for beef, use for the site. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I I have an attorney on the line as well, would somebody please allow him to speak or would you like to have him speak over the phone from my phone?
Um, can I interrupt just for a second? If uh if we are.
If, if we are continuing this hearing, is it appropriate to take this information now, or should it be in the continuance?
The hearing is open, so we, we can accept input.
Okay.
It may define what needs to be done by the petitioner.
I just wanna make, I just wanna make everyone aware that Mark actually lives two houses down from me and my actual next door neighbor. We get along great. I've always said to them, if they have any issues, to come to me. I've never heard not, not word boo from, from my next door neighbors. But, but Mark, two houses down, he hears all the trucks, all the, and, and we also have a lot of building going on on, on the property that abuts us. Yes, I am doing construction. I, I have a permit for my deck. I built a deck. I got a nice stone wall.
I'm not hearing a deck being built.
That, that I've been built. I, yeah, well, you hear the equipment, yes, building the stone wall, yes, you do.
Ms. Ryan.
And, and I also.
Mister, Mister Curtis.
Yes.
I appreciate your response. Do you know the name of the people that you're saying live next door to you and have no complaint?
Oh, that would be Jack and Betty McDonald.
We, Susanna, could I trouble you to read the letter from the McDonald?
Yes. In response to your letter regarding the hearing for one oh seven Coburn Road on October eleventh, as a direct abutter to this property, we want you to communicate to you and the Z B A that we oppose any issuance of a new special permit. The activities on this property, including a new porta potty business, traffic, noise and commercial equipment operating, also a commercial shipping container on the property, are significant and impact our property value and our ability to enjoy our property. Thank you. John and Elizabeth McDonald, one oh three Coburn Road, Berlin.
Huh, that's funny, cuz Jack was just by here two weeks ago.
Thank you, Mister, thank you, Mister Curtis.
Okay.
Um, yes. The, Mark, if you have someone else that wants to speak to us, I'll be glad to hear from them.
He's on. I don't know if somebody can promote him, or I can have him speak via my phone.
I can promote him. What name?
His name is Michael.
I have a Mike Gatlin and a Mike C.
Mike, Mike Gatlin, please, and also at some point.
Lynn, would you like?
Yes.
Mister Gatlin is my attorney and will be representing me.
You broke up, Lynn, I didn't hear you. Lynn?
Yes.
You wish me to promote him?
Please.
Okay.
Mister Gatlin?
Well, I understand that this matter is probably gonna be continued, but just add a couple of points if I could. Under your bylaw, section five forty, has Mister Curtis provided the necessary business certificate? I can't find any corporate listing with the Secretary of State's office for any of the entities that are identified in the correspondence between the applicant and the Building Department, nor can I find the names referenced in that letter as owning corporations that would appear to be related to this operation. So I, I've got a question, what form he's doing business under and whether he's obtained a certificate from the municipality as the, as is conditioned by section five forty point one?
We can check with the town clerk and see if he has a D B A.
Can't hear you.
Is there anything else? Mister Gatlin, do you have anything else? I guess.
Mark, you have to leave me on. I can't get, I can't get any sound. Can I, can you, can they hear me?
Mister Gatlin?
Are you hearing Mister Gatlin, because I, he's calling me saying that he doesn't think you're hearing him?
I don't know. I can't hear them.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, we can hear you.
Okay. So did you hear my question regarding the business certificate and that issue?
Yes. And we will ask Mister Curtis to produce a certificate from the town clerk for a D B A or whatever other authority he has.
All right, another question I've got. Under five forty point one, the business must be owned and operated by a resident of the dwelling. It's not at all clear to me who's operating the business. Is it Mister Curtis? Is it his daughter? Is his daughter a resident?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I think, Mister Curtis, what they're asking is are the two business, from what you're telling me, there's two businesses there. One is operated by your daughter and her boyfriend, and one is operated by you.
Does not, no, every, everything is, is Cully Septic.
Okay. And you do.
That's owned by me and, and my daughter helps me with the business.
For our next meeting, you will produce your D B A or whatever you have as authority for a business. Your D B A or whatever business, what does it state your business is?
An S corp.
Excuse me?
An S corp.
Yes, but what is the nature of the business?
Uh, septic.
Okay, septic systems? Does it have anything to do with the renting of porta potties?
Yes.
That's part of your D B A?
I, 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 I think that's, yeah, I think it's all under one.
With respect to the board, there's a lot of clarification required here. Mister Curtis is kind of remarkably lacking in knowledge about the business operation and what's been allowed and what's not allowed. Pretty, pretty hard for us to be able to deal with whatever this business is if the owner can't describe it.
I just, I just described it. It's a septic business.
A D B A is not, a D B A is not a, uh,
I'm not a D B A. I'm not doing business as, I'm an S corporation.
What's the name of that corporation?
Cully's Septic Corporation.
Okay, I, I prefer not to have Mister Gatlin and Mister Curtis discuss between themselves. We need to direct questions or answers through the board.
Okay.
Okay, Mister Curtis, at least two of your neighbors are not happy campers. So I would suggest that you work hard on preparation of your site plan, that you educate yourself about section five forty and five forty-one as to what you can have and can't have.
There's.
And get your paperwork in, in time to give the two weeks notice in the newspaper and the two weeks notice to the abutters of your, if you choose to request a variance.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we can.
There's additional people on the phone.
The deadline for any new applications for next hearing next month is today. So a variance and site plan approval would not, would not, the timing isn't there to have it for November, it would be December.
Okay, um, what do you think about that, Mister Curtis? You're not gonna be able to get the notices out in time for next month.
Yeah, we could do December.
Again, I'm not telling you that you need to apply for a variance. I'm only telling you that the original permit had a variance tied to it, which expired when the permit expired. And that was for an oversized, one oversized vehicle. You do know, I mean, the bylaw will tell you what the weight limits are, how many you can have, et cetera.
Okay, yes. And it was, yep.
And it'll tell you about screening and, and out, uh, in another section that it refers to from your neighbors.
Okay.
I think it's kind of sad because it seems as though the neighbors have been reasonably happy for ten years. And something seems to have happened recently to change that. So what would you like to, all right, there's someone else that wants to speak, did you say, Leanne?
I just, there was somebody else that was on the call. I'd like to know who that was.
I do not see anybody in the audience with a hand up.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a point of clarification. Under section five, five forty point nine, this permit has expired, expired quite a while ago. Is Mister Curtis gonna be allowed to continue his business while he refiles for a, a new permit or variance?
That is not our choice. That is the choice of the building commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any other comments?
Madam Chair, if I may, I just did a quick look, just because the question came up. And there is a business entity summary for Cully Septic Service Incorporated on the Secretary of State's website, Corporations Division.
What do they give as an address?
Uh, it's one oh seven Coburn Road, Berlin, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you.
The business entity on that, if somebody's looking, has an I D number of eight eight zero four four five.
You are a researcher, thank you. Okay, um, does anyone interested? I assume Mister Curtis that you would like a continuance until December, is that correct, for the special permit?
Yes, please.
And you need to pay attention to dates and so forth. If in fact you decide to file for a variance and a site plan, which is what we are suggesting, then you will need to do that in a timely fashion. And again, if you go to mytowngovernment.org forward slash zero one zero five three, you will see the bylaw is out there, a list of the dates that you have to meet for the filing dates. And is there any confusion in your mind as to what we will need on that site plan in order to be able to review it?
Uh, no, ma'am.
You're sure?
Yep.
Okay, and again, whether or not you apply for another variance is up to you, but if you do, you need to meet timelines. This will require.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be doing that.
For the special permit, this will require an extension. Okay? And we need you to come into the building commissioner's office and sign an extension of the due dates. We have a certain amount of time in order to perform my duties on the special permit. And if it is your will that we continue this until December, then it would be at your request, but it would be subject to you signing the appropriate paperwork to extend the dates.
Okay, and when do I have to sign that?
I, I can actually send it to you electronically.
Oh, that would be perfect.
Okay, anyone else have anything? I wanna thank you, Mister Curtis. I wanna thank you, Mister Gatlin. And Mark, I appreciate your input. And I'm sure the board does too.
I'm thankful, I'm thankful to see, Ms. Ryan, that you have actually taken a drive-by and you're seeing what reality is versus what is being shared with you.
Yeah, and I, I also wanted to let you know that there are two other vehicles here that, actually are from my father that passed away. And, and, yeah, in January. So.
Well, we can discuss that at the next hearing. We are interested in any commercial vehicle, backhoe, trailer, anything like that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Private vehicles, even if you have a pickup truck and it has the name of the company on the side of it, we would consider that a commercial vehicle.
Okay.
And you can look in the definitions section in the back of our bylaw. A gross vehicular weight is that which is registered with, when you register the vehicle, it's given a gross vehicular weight. And that's what we go by. Sometimes people with semi rigs say, well, the cab and the, you know, trailer are different. No, the cab is, you know, for a certain weight. Uh, and that would include whatever it's hauling. So that's the weight we go on.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll have all that for the next meeting.
If you have questions, I encourage you to please pursue an answer before the next meeting. It'll save you and everybody else a lot of time.
Okay.
Okay, I think what we're looking, is it your desire that we continue this to hearing until December?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to be made that continues the special permit hearing until, what is our date in December, Leanne?
December thirteenth.
Thirteen.
Continue it until December thirteenth at seven o'clock. And at the request of the petitioner, provided that the proper extension forms are signed. Do I have such a motion?
Sure move.
That is Jim, do I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna take Ginny, cuz she lit up first. Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
Hi.
Janice?
Hi.
Uh, Susanna?
Hi.
And Ginny?
Hi.
Okay, you have your extension. Again, the filing of a site plan and a variant, we're going to be looking for a site plan, but the filing of a variance is up to you, but Mister Gatlin, do you have a copy of the original permit that was issued to the petitioner?
I do not. I can call your office tomorrow or the Building Department and get a copy of that.
Well, they're not open tomorrow. So could I trouble you? I know you have it electronically. If anyone who is listening is interested in a copy of the original permit, would they please contact Leanne? Z B A, you know, just this regular Z B A at Town of Berlin. And request one. And we can send you, we have that electronically in a file, don't we, Leanne?
Um, I'm not sure, but I have a hard copy. I can easily scan it in and send it out to anybody requesting it.
Okay, um, we've continued, sir, until December thirteenth. Uh, December thirteenth.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Catlin.
Thank you all of you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay, do we have any, uh, I'll close the hearing, or, uh, not close the hearing, we already continued it. So, uh, do we have anything else as part of our?
I have nothing else on the agenda, and let me just check. And I do not see anyone. In the audience with anything. So we can adjourn.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, was that Danny?
Jim. It was Jim.
Okay, uh, Jim, and who seconded?
Seconded Ginny.
Okay, is Mark still on?
Uh, uh, no, we have Peter Hoffman, um, noisy neighbor two two five, Kayla Curtis and Jeff Curtis.
Um, all I would suggest. Um. Is that the McDonald's, is it? Um, that, um, we offered them. Um. Well, I'd like Mark to. Um, submit in writing, um, his dissertation.
Yes, I was, I was gonna email and asking him, since it was written to record, asking him for a copy of it for the file.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if we have nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And we have a motion in a second, do we already?
Yes.
Yes, do, need a vote.
All right, we'll do a, um. Roll call, Danny.
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Um, Jim?
Hi.
And Ginny?
Hi.
Okay, thank you, folks, we're adjourned.